Good morning. We will call the meeting to order, and the first item is the approval of the agenda. And I understand that Commissioner Campbell has an addition he would like to add.
I do. I would like to add the contract, the annual contract renewal for the juvenile detention center, and maybe, Mr. Chairman, we could discuss that when Stephen is here at 10:45.
Sounds good. Any other corrections or additions?
We'll go through what the additions.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. Next item is citizens to be heard. There are no citizens in the audience today. At this time, I'm going to jump down to the number four, approval to pay bills and vouchers, because Commissioner Wayland will have to leave possible before we get there. Do we have a motion?
I move we pay the bills and vouchers.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. We'll now go on to budget presentations, and Brian Berg, our county administrator, would like to give us the opening comments on this place.
Morning.
Good morning. I'm so comfortable right now.
Morning, Mr. Chair.
She's not in the direct line of fire.
I guess not.
It's not good when you're looking for backup.
They want to be back. Grant can probably identify with that. Okay. Well, good morning again, Mr. Commissioners. We'll take a few minutes to go through some of the documents that you have in your packet that was handed out to you this morning. And what you have is my memo in front of you, and then there's probably four or five pages that we'll breeze through quickly, and then there will be the budget document and then public health's summary, and then the goals from the different departments. But if we can start with the first pages, and we'll just run over the summary, and I know you can read, but we'll do this for the audience that's watching as well. Attached is the 2014 budget proposal in its early stages. Now, several meetings with departments heads have been conducted, and we'll continue to develop the budget with your help and guidance. This working document includes information pieces as follows. We have a summary of the 2014 proposed funds. I didn't say levy this year. There's levy limits, so we'll start out with what the departments have submitted as what they feel their needs are. And the request total levy dollars of $26,59,270, which represents a 7.26 percent increase over 2013. There's a sheet on there on the distribution of the proposed levy is controlled, and I said in here it's controlled by the levy limits this year, so you know that that 7.26 is not going to happen because of levy limits. Summary of the proposed revenues, expenditures, and gross levies by departments. Public Health Department budget summary, as I stated, is towards the end of your documents there. The requests for new proposals is $386,955. And what we have done today is, we know you haven't reviewed this document, but we have the departments that contributed to this new request coming in, so they can present their initial case, and you can then use that when you are considering whether you support that new proposal or not. I think it's always good to look at the fund balance comparisons from year to year, and that document is in there as well. The levy history as well, so you can see what percentages have been increased over the years. There's also a document in there, and I know Commissioner Gross is new, but there is a county ranking in there in regards to what the state auditor does every year, and we can certainly look at that. The most current one on the state auditor's website is for 2011. And then you have the 2014 departmental goals. The projection for the county program aid payment this year, we added in $500,000. It may be somewhat more than that, but it would probably be in the $30,000 or $40,000 range if there's going to be an increase above the 500. What we've included is the $500,000 to bring it up to $2,864,447. And then the following items are addressed in the working document that we have included here. Cost of living adjustments are included of 2 percent. That totals $443,351. Step adjustments are included. We added $200,000 for health insurance premium increases. We added $150,000, that's a rough estimate, on M.C.I.T. dividends. If you notice last year, the last two years have been extraordinary, so we certainly can't count on those. They reduced their premiums last year, plus their earnings have been reduced, so we don't know where it was at. Hopefully, this is a conservative figure, and this will help us out in the bottom line when we get done, and we'll know within the next month as you folks press forward in developing your budget. The growth of new construction was pretty constant, although last year, I think I recall the figure was like $47 million. This year, for 2012, was $55 million of new growth, which was just over 1 percent. Market value increase, and probably mostly due to farmlands, and I think the farmer out there can attest to the fact that they have seen marketable evaluation increases within their farmland, is up considerably at about 9 percent in market value for the property within Clay County. $145,000 again is included this year for the FM metro flood diversion costs. Other litigation issues may arise and are not accounted for, and we haven't in other years either. We would expect to use reserves if we were so judged to need to pay any litigation. And then $500,000, and Lori will probably explain that if you need further explanation. But right now, she took a little out of the Internal Service Fund, and then the rest is just a itemized item until we break that down more. But $500,000 included for the sales tax exemption. If we go to the next page, it's the new request, and this is just my breakdown of it. Each department will come in and explain these, but Information Services is requesting, which, remember, you had M.I.S. and G.I.S. were two departments. Now it's Information Services and Technology Services. Information Services, as you see, is requesting $50,000 for new software. They're here to explain that a little more. I have a little explanation that maybe if you choose not to fund it all this year, that we could probably do some other things there to accomplish that task. Technology Services will be talking about $20,000, because he just feels he doesn't stay up with it. Last year, you improved it about $35,000 increase in his Internal Service Fund. Department of Motor Vehicles requesting a full-time position. Veteran Services, Tom will come in and talk about that a little bit. He just feels they really get pushed at times, and with their increased workload, he would like to have some flexible roster hours. Planning and zoning, we'd asked him to add $2,500 for any economic development authority expense. Sure, there's some increases there, a little part-time help for, in regards to the transportation, but they can explain through that. Corrections is probably the big one. One new F.T.E. plus the out-of-county boarding costs of the six beds that we're losing is pretty healthy. The equipment, Julie had asked for the 41-5 last year in regards to the equipment, and we eliminated that with the idea that if that does break down, we will replace that with Internal Service Funds, and the same philosophy would apply this year. Juvenile detention, Steve will be coming in to talk about that. The secure unit, they're looking for two F.T.E.s, but the trade-off dollars are from rostered money, and he can explain that further. The same with non-secure, it's one F.T.E., and there's a trade-off of some dollars there. Extension is requesting a .5 position, and that has gone before the Extension Committee, and he will be in this morning to talk about that. And Building and Grounds is asking for one F.T.E. as well to help with more cleaning. The demand's never quit over in the family service center, but that's something we can work through as well. And then I just listed some points of interest on the next page to, just for your, basically their informational issues. Probation, when the budget was turned in, it was showing $177,000 less than revenue. Now, that is a grant, and that has been applied for, but probation, Shelley's certainly not guaranteed that it's going to come in. She thinks they have a good chance, but she said, "I just feel I can't go out on a limb and say that it's going to come in." And I said, "Oh, that's fine. We did put the revenue in the budget," because, and I said, "We'll deal with that. If the grant isn't granted, then the board will have to decide how they want to handle that." But for right now, we left it in there. And then there's just an adjustment. If you look at your spreadsheets and the documents, and you see that it's $36,000 less in expenses this year over last year, and you wonder why, there was an error last year in the reentry program of how it was entered. Under the county administration, you'll notice that the county administrator's budget is reduced this year, and that's simply an administrative move. Melissa was funded from the county administrator's budget. She works primarily for human resource, so we've moved that over to the human resource budget. Information Services, just again, I mentioned that they were one department, and now they are separate departments. Surveyors' budget, there was much discussion this last year, so we did, for your consideration, move from $40,000 up to, back up to $50,000 for the savers. Might not be the year we can do that, I don't know. But Red River Dispatch, they started out requesting six new positions this year, but the proposal was for three new positions this year, and then they want to ask for three more next year again. And what they're trying to do is establish one more workstation. They feel the calls for service are a little delayed, and I'm sure Matt will talk about that when he comes in. Aggrisie Library is asking for about a $20,000 increase of 8.39 percent. They had a sizable increase last year as well. I don't know what the maintenance of effort from the state is, and we'll know that later on as the summer goes by, but you'll have your, and the same with Historical Society. Now, Historical Society hasn't asked for an increase for several years, and their request this year is about a 5 percent increase. Just for your information, you're well aware of it, but I know Commissioner Gross wasn't here last year. But Public Health was funded. We did not reduce the expenditures last year. We did obligate $250,000 from reserves to fill the gap of the levy last year. West Central on aging, it's not a huge amount. It's about a 20 percent increase, but it's a $1,000 increase. Senior Coordinator position, that's seen a sizable increase, and as the federal dollars have been drying up, that is asking for a $9,000 increase. It's about 28 percent this year. Social Services, the same as Public Health, was funded with $450,000 from reserve last year. We'll see how that comes about, and I know you'll be anxious to see where the expenditures are so far this year for the six months, and we'll certainly get that ready by the next meeting. Assessors, you're aware of the revenue increase that's been requested there, so that went up $29,000. That's just a reminder that that took place. Sheriff's Office, you added the School Resource Officer during the year, so that will add some expenses to 2014's request. Correction, prisoner healthcare, now this is with the current budget. This isn't a new program. This is the current budget. You'll see an $80,000 increase because of prisoner healthcare. And then out-of-county boarding, just in the regular budget, she was, she's also asking for a $53,000 increase there, which is about a 23 percent, plus the new request. So the corrections budget is looking at a very healthy, I think it was almost close to $400,000 just in corrections. That's huge. And housing abatements, Lori and I just talked about this yesterday, that we'll have to work on some figures on that, but that has not been included in the budget. Remember, we had the budget for the rebates on that, but it's not necessarily new monies. We'll receive the monies in, and then we have to pay it back out. So it will have, it won't have a negative or a positive effect on the budget, but the figures have to be put in there because they have to be authorized to pay out. And I was going to take about 15 minutes. I'm close to that. The next page you have is the fund balances on there, and you'll see, with the exception of solid waste, 2013 was a positive year in every column for us, and I think with solid waste, we had about a million-dollar improvement to a cell that was put in. If you remember, you authorized that and took a little out of their reserves. So that's about the only fund balance that we do. Some of them had some very healthy improvements for 2012, at the end of 2012. So that looks favorable. And then, of course, the county levy, the percentage increases last year. And if you, again, you'll notice, and I guess I keep reminding, this is 2012 and 2013 were about flat. You went down 3.71 in 2012. You went up 3.83 in 2013, but between the two years, that was a zero, basically a zero increase on the taxpayer overall. And then the next page is the county financial data search comparisons. And that's something, just for your review, and we kind of keep an eye on that. For 2011, it doesn't change much. We maybe change a position or two each year, but the net tax capacity per capita, we're 75 out of 87, so we're down at the lower end of that, but we are a border state, and we need to compete. And then the other document is, it's budget by, or department by department for their, all their budgets. So when you have absolutely nothing to do in the evening, you can sit in front of the TV and go line by line on these things. And that's what we do with it. So it's interesting sometimes what you see comparison-wise. And then Public Health has their spreadsheet in the back. It's certainly condensed. And then the department's goals. So, Mr. Chair, that's just basically to get us started on it, and certainly entertain any questions, and I know there will be a lot of questions and a lot of work to do in the next month or two as we formulate the budget.
Thank you, Brian. Any questions at this time?
We just have one for right now, and we'll get into these. When we had our management retreat.
Yes.
One of the goals that came out of there was starting to set aside funds for a correctional facility. Where's that in here?
Yeah. And, Mr. Chair, we'll have to work through that and see where we want to, I mean, if we want to take something out of reserves, just, it's not in there this year yet. I know it should be.
Well, I, I'm just trying to make a point.
Yeah, that's right.
We have, we establish goals, and sometimes those goals are just extremely hard to make.
They are, yeah. But I think also, and I won't say in defense of that, we had an extensive discussion about looking at a sales tax as well, looking at about a three-prong.
Right. No question, no question. The amount that was anticipated, or that had been suggested was a very small amount.
Yeah. We were looking at a quarter percent, like $62,000, and hopefully we can add it in, but.
But it was a new request, wasn't it? Wouldn't that be considered a new request?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Your point is well taken.
Okay, thank you, Brian. At this time, we'll call on Tim Dent and Mark Sloan. Good morning, gentlemen.
All right, white.
You're up great and early.
Separate departments, but you still arrive together.
Yeah, we're still team.
Still talking, yeah?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, if you want to follow along or reference theirs, they're on page 15 and 16 of your big document, the individual budgets.
Is that my request first?
Sure.
If it's smaller.
Yeah. Start little and drill.
The only item I have listed in my 2014 budget as a new request is for the Internal Services. Remember, last year I came in with a request for about a $70,000 increase in that item, and I got about half of it. It still remains pretty inadequate for our needs, so I'm requesting to increase that item by $20,000. I guess the only other increase I have in my budget that's pretty notable is in the computer software. I didn't consider it a new item, because this was mostly due to our Microsoft Enterprise Agreement that we have, and during the last budgeting cycle, we had just gotten an estimate on what our new contract was going to be, and it was much higher than we anticipated. And so that's why there's such a large increase in that item.
So that's maintenance?
It's our, it's our, yeah, it's our Microsoft Enterprise Agreement. It's our, it's all the software that we have from Microsoft, includes all of our office licensing, our server licensing, SQL licensing, all of our user CALs, our antivirus software, our link, SharePoint, just every Microsoft product that we, is in that contract.
Any comments or questions for Kim? Mark?
Thank you, Kim. Mentioned earlier was the management retreat we did last spring, and one of the items that came out of there that we wanted to focus on was the delivery of services. We feel that one of the big ways we deliver services to our citizens is through our online systems, mainly our main county website is our big one. Our county website's been out there for about 12 years now, and the way we manage and maintain it hasn't changed since we started. We're using basically the same exact system as we started with back in the original days. And we're seeing, you know, we're getting a half a million hits a month on that website. We're delivering about 5,000 pages of information. We're providing as much service as we can, but we've reached the end of life, as we would call it, with that, the way we run the system. So what we did is we started looking at, how would we go to something new? So we looked around at what other counties are doing across Minnesota, and some local governments, City of Morehead, some of those, and we tried to figure out what they were using for systems, and then we actually talked to some of the vendors to find out what does it cost. I mean, because the question I had was, what is this going to cost us? Well, we found that the cost of moving to a new website system is going to cost an organization of our size something between $40,000 and $80,000. And without an actual RFP, we wouldn't know the exact number, but we came up with our best guess, so that's why we came here today and said, you know, we're going to need about $50,000 to move to an entirely new website system. I put the other little sheet that talks about some of the highlights of that, and one of the big things we're looking at doing is, it's a whole different way of managing our system. Specifically, now what happens is we have really one person that runs our entire website, and all the changes happen through that person, and that's, and it's kind of a cumbersome approach. What we're looking at doing is something called Content Management Systems, which allows our individual departments to do, make some of their own changes, to do additions and remove things from their own webpages, and distribute some of that work. And that allows our staff some additional time to add some more application development to some of the things we've struggled with for years, and how do we get the staff time and resources to do some even more, because we're looking at more and more delivery. And one of the things I really want to see out of this whole project is the capability for our website to be a little more mobile-friendly. Right now, it's not as much as we'd like it to be, you know, specifically with the people using smartphones and iPads and tablets and these types of products. So really, what we're asking as far as a brand-new website and consultant cost it's going to take to do that, and that's what we're talking about. That's why we're here.
Thank you, Tim. Thank you, Mark. Any questions for Mark at this time? I think he brought the calls.
Is there something that has to be done all at one time, or is that the best way to accomplish it, I suppose?
Yeah. What we're looking at here with this kind of cost is basically the purchase of a package. You buy it from a company, and they go through a big, huge process of translating all our stuff from where it is now to the new one, and so it's kind of a, you buy into it, and then after that, there's going to be some costs for maintenance over the years, but those will come out of probably a different fund, and we'll look at next year, but they're much smaller. But yeah, it's really, you buy into it, and then, but now, if we're not able to fund it, then we'd have to look at some other approaches, how, what other options are available. So I don't know that yet.
John?
So this, for that price, whether 50 or 80 or what it is, the company then does the import from what we have to the new. It's not going to take a lot of extra staff on our part to do that.
Right. Our staff will be involved a lot, but yeah, it, that's one of the parts of this, is they come in and they help with the whole transition to the whole new thing, help getting it all set up and all up and running, because that's always been the struggle, is we've always kind of wanted to move to the next step, but our staff are also busy doing their daily job that there's never any extra time to do that piece, and that's where we always get kind of caught, so.
Is this a, are you looking for a change in computer language, the way it's written? Is that what you're?
Yeah. It includes, not only, they include, we're talking, not only, we're talking the software we use to maintain it, but actually the backend, the stuff it sits on, how it functions, all those pieces are all going to be different because of changing in technology, really.
Okay. And then in terms of the, and I certainly understand where the technology with the smartphones and all that is going, it seems like that's a lot, that's now become a lot of people's laptops.
Right.
You know? But they have access to that now. Is it, is it a speed issue, or?
No, it has to do with.
Is it the old language that slows it down and trying to?
It's not a slowness so much as the, the way our website is now, it's basically just a page, so when you look at it on a smartphone, you have to do all this paging, panning around on it to read it. And some of these newer systems now have the capability of reformatting themselves based on the size of your screen.
Or have super powerful.
Yeah, exactly. That's why I had to start wearing these. But, no, that's, yeah, the newer ones, with the newer technology, it's capable of reformatting itself based on the size of the screen you're using, and it will actually remove some of the things and change the shapes and styles, and it makes it a lot more compatible. It's really, you know, technology's changing, so.
John?
Will it increase the usefulness for, are the other departments, or is it mostly for the general public?
It would increase it for mostly the general public, but our departments use it too also as a resource, you know, look up some of their own, it's a great place for them to store some of their information. But one of the things we're looking at where we can benefit that departments is by making this change is will allow it to be a little easier for them to make changes to their pieces, so they have a little more control locally at the department level of how their web presence looks.
And you're comfortable giving up some of that control?
Right. Well, yeah, and one of the nice things about this is it allows a management capability where they can make all the changes they want, and they submit it, but it doesn't actually show up on the outside room until it's approved.
So there would still be an approval process?
Yeah, and that would come through our staff, and they basically make sure, yep, it matches the right format, style, it's not anything inappropriate, those kind of things. And, yeah, there's some steps there to allow a lot of that to happen.
You could design it where they, they could just push their changes out.
Yes.
That's a decision that has.
That's something we'll decide.
One last comment, and maybe a follow-up to Mr. Wayland's question, is. One last comment, and maybe a follow-up to Mr. Whaling's question, is obviously we've got to lower some things, as you've heard in Brian's opening. What would you feel if this were to, what would be the problems or concerns if this was delayed?
If we delayed this, I think what we're going to have to do is keep our existing website running a longer time. It's going to take us longer to move to something new. It's really what's going to happen to us.
And Tim, maybe I should ask you that same question with your request.
Well, I think running the way we are right now would almost need more people in that department to continue to maintain it the way they're maintaining it. And I haven't been real involved in this process, but it seems to me that by doing this, it's going to take a lot of load off of Marie and what she does, and hopefully make it so we don't have to hire new staff in that department.
Do we still offer services to outside agencies to assist them with putting stuff on our website as well as to link to others?
Yes.
Are we receiving any revenue from them?
No, but we don't do very much of that.
You don't do very much?
We'll help them when it comes up, but it's not like a daily activity.
Okay.
We have a policy too on who we'll do that for. It has to be such a low population or, you know, so many pages. It's just for the very small agencies.
For the really basic, simplest of stuff that doesn't really cost us a lot of time.
Right. I wasn't sure I had to ask.
Okay, thank you so much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Ben Anderson and Josh Kokowski, extension. Which one of you is Josh? Got to be from Georgetown.
Yep. The last name was in front of you. I think you were teaching me English, I think, in Morgan.
Was he any good?
We'll find out.
We'll tell about how good the grammar is in these documents that we submitted.
What was your grandfather's first name?
Grandfather's?
Yeah.
Frank, Frank Kokowski.
There's another Kokowski.
Francis is my uncle. He passed away in '11. But there's a few of us scattered around.
Yeah. And one was a very good friend of my father's, say his first name.
My great-grandfather was Aloysius. Would be a Navy wouldn't forget, but...
That would be closer, really.
Kathy. Like I said before, I'm so old, my clothes are made in America. Kathy, Ellen.
Yes.
Who's her dad?
Her dad is Billy Kokowski, who is...
That's the one I...
Yep, he passed away in '86. Good, really good friend of my father's.
Okay, go ahead.
Is extension on here? Do we have a page in that?
Oh, yes.
Sorry. Page forty-three. Thank you.
So we have a few requests that I'll go through. Some of them were just smaller ones. We, as you know, when Met vacated the space next to us, the regional office took that over, and the kitchen that was there we're sharing with the county office. So there was a, for this county office budget, there was a new request of a little over $1,000 to pay for half of the kitchen rent. We had a small request of $500 for additional office supplies. We increased our miscellaneous account by 350 to provide a total of $600 to the master gardeners that do the flowers out front of the courthouse. And then we made some decreases as well. But mainly what we're here to talk about today is the salaries regular account line. With the current MOA with the university, if you remember, in 2014, the rates for the full-time current 4-H program coordinator position and the agriculture and horticulture educator, that would go up 1.5%. So that's reflected in there, and that's $2,245. And then today, we want to talk with you as well about adding a halftime 4-H program coordinator position as well, and that would be for 2014, $33,265. I don't know if you have this, but we had put this together and submitted it with our budget materials, kind of an overview of where we're coming from with this request. And basically, Josh will kind of touch on most of this, so I'll just kind of introduce it. In 2009, we had this position in place, and the person left in 2009, and because of the budget situation at that time, as I understand it, the position was froze. And we filled it in with promised fellows and interns, but there's some changes to that programming and that relationship with that organization that's not going to work out anymore for us. And so this document, it also kind of gives an overview of what will be affected and kind of the changes and the reduction of programming if we don't have this halftime position to fill in for the promised fellows that we're going to be losing after this year.
Basically, when the position was frozen in 2009, the work was that important that we found other resources, and the biggest resource was that promised fellows through the AmeriCorps program. However, and it worked out well in the meantime. However, the AmeriCorps program puts together a lot of requirements, certain target audiences that sometimes don't align with our, with the 4-H mission, required a lot of staff training that pulled them away from the county as well. And so we've made a decision that this is just not a viable option to continue in terms of that. So we decided that we were asking to reinstate the halftime position. The work cannot be absorbed with the current program coordinator. That would pull that person, stretch that person too thin at this point, and so the work is, just could not be absorbed into that other position. What do you get with that halftime position? What you're essentially getting is, and the document kind of indicates a little bit of that, but it's about 800, over 800 youth get touched every summer through that. And I look at the map on the county there, it's spread throughout, all throughout the county. We have sites here, I think we have seven sites here in Morehead, we have Barnesville, Glendon, at the high school there, partnerships there, Holly, Ewan, too, you can get up to the other corner up there. I haven't quite made it to Georgetown yet, but we'll find a way there, too. There's two programs. The main program that is probably the most visible to the schools is the after-school program. And so we come in there about once a month, sometimes twice a month, and we would come in there and give a high-quality 4-H program. The 4-H is a reputation that we precede itself with. If we didn't have that position, we would may go in there once a year, and then some sites would not be eliminated, would be eliminated. And then rebuilding those relationships later on would really take a lot of energy and time. And so we have those relationships in place, and we can start again as soon as possible if that was in their place. The other piece, and this is the one where the numbers really grow, is a program called the Summer Survival Program. And I was just there yesterday at Lamb Park here in South Morehead, watching this, and it's a partnership in Morehead, it's this extensive partnership, park and rec, where we go in there and provide a theme-based program, and, you know, anywhere from, well, whoever kind of comes at that, you know, on a daily basis, but there could be up to 35 kids there at a site at times. So we have, sometimes it's overload in certain cases for that piece. But those kids, they come year after year after year, and the attendance has been consistent, you know, aside from the Fourth of July week, but aside, it's a consistent attendance figures here for them. So those kids start in first and second grade, and they continue all the way to fifth grade until they kind of age out and do other things in the summertime for that. But that's a huge component, that curriculum is developed by us, it's curriculum that's delivered by us and is tracked by us, evaluated by us. It's a program that our partners I was speaking with yesterday said that they really enjoy. It's a really good piece for them. And so that's the, those are the two main components that you would get with that halftime position here. So we're asking you to reinstate that for that, because I think the loss would be over 700, 800 experiences for youth throughout Clay County.
Okay.
Do you have any questions for Ben or Josh?
Well, to speak from the position of the committee, advisory committee, I just, I'm not on it now, but I did attend the last meeting for Kevin when this was discussed. It's an important position, and it affects a lot of families and so on. With the tight budget restraints we have, though, you know, I don't know how it's going to be possible this year, but it certainly is a worthy program, and it's no question that we should be trying to find a way to do it. We did have, also after '09, we did secure grant from a family that helped a lot with some of the programs that otherwise wouldn't have been, wouldn't have been done. And I don't know if that's been pursued again to renew it. It, I think it's up now, isn't it? So hopefully that can help, can help somewhat in finding more funds to continue those things. But it's a difficult situation.
I know. I was a teacher for nine years, so I followed Wayne, Mr. Ingersoll's footsteps a little bit, but then I came back to the 4-H program just because of the, not necessarily to honor that commitment, but really to, because I believe in the program, and I grew up in the program, and it's helped a lot of kids. And so I left a cushy teacher job for...
You left the big money.
I left the big money to come for the bigger. So, no, so I believe in that program, and I can echo your sentiments with in quotes.
Any questions?
Yeah, well, not so much questions, but a couple of comments. First off, I did not grow up in the program, but I had a son that did, and it was a life-changing experience for him. He really enjoyed it, and I understand its importance and its significance. And I've said all the time since I've been on the commission and on that committee that the key to the future funding success of that program is its students, and that we keep the students in there and keep them involved, and the number of kids. And you've emphasized today that there would be a loss of a lot of those kids, and that's concerning. You know, so as we move forward in this budget thing, I'm not going to give up on it as a complete no chance, but when we look at where we're at with this .8, where we have to get down from seven-something to .8, I think is the number, that is extremely significant, and there's a lot of areas that we would like to fund that we're not going to be able to. But I am going to, I'm going to continue to, and I was going to ask one question. Can you provide for us, for down the line, the number of clubs and the number of kids, some data that show where we are today with the 4-H youth involvement in our county, and what you would think would happen to that with the lack of this position?
Yes, I could. I could certainly provide that for you. We could, Ben and I can work together to get that for you here.
That would just be good to have for future, and, you know, maybe we can think outside the box here to maybe try to find some other ways to assist in this as well, so.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Tom Calusi, Veteran Service Officer. Good morning, Tom. You're welcome.
Twenty-four on this one.
Thank you.
My father's name is Rocky Calusi.
Just in case he was going to ask. Wayne didn't teach him.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Twenty-four.
Well, I'm going to try to make this as quick as possible. I have a funeral to attend with my partner when I was a Nottetail County Veteran Service Officer, a former Marine, so as soon as I leave here, I'm going to go to that funeral. So I'll try to make this as quick, and if I, if you need more time, you know, with me, maybe we can, you know, we call back and...
Tom, what time approximately do you have to be on your way?
I should probably be out here in about 15, 20 minutes.
Okay, if we have questions that go beyond that, we will ask you to come back.
Okay, real good. So just to help me with some brevity, I just made a few notes here. Most of the time when the Veteran Service Offices is seen to appear on the commission agenda, it is there merely to request the board to accept monetary or in-kind donations to our department. That is always a positive position to be able to be in. Another positive item is that last year, I held my budget line steady and sought no increases. The last time I requested additional funding for the purpose of a position was back in 2009, which I asked for a full-time deputy VSO and a halftime assistant admin receptionist, which the full-time deputy position was denied at that time, but the halftime admin was granted. With the wars that have been ongoing now for over 10 years, and the National Guard and Reserve units now being used also like active-duty units, this has caused the population explosion, and not only new veterans pouring in, but changing and growing benefits coming into the scene, requiring a demand that we are witnessing on our services that is unprecedented. With our current manpower structure, we have had to think outside the box and develop many partnerships and alliances to augment our department, and I think many of you have seen that when you come to our Commissioners Day. Part of those collaborations was an effort for us to be able to scan and digitize our hard files to make that an automated system. To do this, we were able to utilize an offer from the SEP. By utilizing SEP staff for that project, this not only helped us solve the majority of our project, but it did so by using almost a half a year of professional labor at no charge to our department or the county. We are now mostly digitized, and our file drawers are now breathing a little easier again. With our Clay County VSO volunteers, we average about 1,300 hours a year of donated hours to the county. Our agency partners that we have aligned ourselves provide us services to our veterans that greatly assist us and cost us nothing. I am not asking for money to be, to place into my budget, to be put there with the intention of spending it, and I think I've made that point clear in what I have, you know, sent forward. I'm asking for the funds more like we buy insurance, to purchase it with the hope of never having to use it. If my proposal will not work in the manner that I have requested it for reasons that just aren't announced to me, then perhaps the commission can consider making a reserve fund. I think that with the history of our department, we can safely anticipate that these gaps will continue to show themselves, and having a plan in place would be a prudent measure for a department to have on hand. So I'm doing this more to prevent myself having to come here at some point and ask for an additional FTE, just by having this contingency there.
Thank you, Tom.
Yeah, Tom, I noticed on here, and maybe a question for Lori, but why are we having a 36.96% increase in your health insurance line?
What's up with that? And that would be...
I'd have to look at your spreadsheet. I didn't...
Well, last year's budget was $18,000, and this year it's $25,000. I, you know, if, that seems to be pretty significant for... Now, this extra $8,500, Lori, would that, or maybe a question for Darren, would that put these part-time people into a different category where they would need health insurance? Or if that's the case, could Tom use those dollars in a different way with other people to avoid that? I don't understand how we got to almost 37% in health insurance increase costs.
I'd have to look at his detail. I mean, it's not quite a, because $10,000 is about how much our insurance costs per person per year, so it's not quite a one FTE, so it looks like more seven or eight.
But Tom, would your request here be to, you would just want additional dollars available to have additional part-time help, right? It's not necessarily that you'd want to have somebody in there with hours that would get them into a benefits employee.
You are absolutely correct. It is more like, I guess another way of putting it is a reserve. We have, since I've been working here since 2006, we have had gaps where...
And I appreciate, I appreciate that. I think that's really good, but...
Darren, what do we call them now? Not roster employees, but what was the, we have a new...
Very low-earned employees.
Very low-earned employees, yeah.
But, Mr. Chairman, isn't, but also the increase in health insurance, shouldn't that, shouldn't that, we've already accounted for that, haven't we, separately?
Mr. Chair, I believe there's an error there.
There is.
I believe there is still.
Yeah, yeah.
But wouldn't that help this case?
That'll help it. That'll... That'll help. That should be it.
Further questions for Tom at this time?
Tom, have you tracked the increase in volume of your requests for service over there? I mean, do you know, like, at this, for the first half of this year, or, you know, what percentage you're over in terms of increases for requests for service over last year? Have you looked at that, or?
I haven't had time to develop a system to track. It's just, it is, there is so much of a demand for our services now. If I'm ever to be out for a particular length of time, you know, the Veteran Service Offices is, is going to be so backed up by the time I come back, or, you know, I have one and a half staff and, and the phone just doesn't stop ringing and walk-ins are continuous.
That might be something you want to have a volunteer work on for you, kind of track, you know, track that from one year to the next, because, you know, we're well aware that, you know, with what's going on, the increases in your calls for service are increasing dramatically, so, you know, if you have a volunteer that, you know, maybe could work on that in the future, that might be helpful, you know, for your requests for, you know, additional staff and that type of thing, so.
No, thank you, Tom. My, our condolences too for your loss of your friend and, and fellow veterans, so.
Okay, well, if you'll consider this, and if you can, that's wonderful. If, if you can't, maybe you can offer some advice or some options of what you think I could do, you know, in those situations.
Great, thank you.
I think we'll be able to work with you.
Appreciate it very much. Robbie in Georgia. Robbie loves to come to the ward.
It's one of his favorite things. Favorite thing he does.
Looking forward to this.
Used to be my friend, Robbie.
There you go, there you go.
He'd rather, he'd rather, he'd probably rather have his teeth pulled.
Good morning, Georgia.
Good morning, how are you?
Am I right?
You're one hundred percent right. You know my weakness, right? All right, Kevin?
You need to look back.
Lori, did you get one?
Well, I think we have something here for consideration for you guys as we look at the next year's budget, and I think it's been an ongoing concern over there for a long time, is we're just short of custodial staff and, and it's, the building is very busy and I think just the mere presence of having somebody over there during the day would, you know, alleviate a lot of those concerns, so that's why we'd like you guys to consider this, this position. You know, we've tried utilizing nonprofit agencies, but sometimes it can be hard to secure, you know, people that are going to stay for a long period of time or, you know, they're limited to hours and they're not able to have, you know, keys and access and-
You're looking for a full-time equivalent.
Right, right. And, and we are, you know, we do run short. You know, I think we currently have three full-time, one part-time and, you know, and one point five the roster. You know, I think when you look at the square footage, we're just short overall of staff and, and it's, it's just very tough to have the maintenance guys drop what they're doing to run for some custodial issues when they should be doing maintenance things. So, you know, it's, you know, provide a, you know, I, I think, whenever I go into a building and see somebody cleaning, I think you just have a better feeling. People know that if they call it with an issue of something, that somebody's going to come and take care of it.
Thank you, Georgia.
We would still just continue to pursue using the part-time, or the nonprofit agencies to the volunteers that we can, but in, you know, in addition to this position.
Let me understand what Robbie's saying. John?
Okay, so that's, I guess that was my question. You would, you would, your request is so that you could have four full-time and, and still have the part-time in the roster, right? Okay.
Any further questions for Robbie or Georgia at this time? Kevin?
Georgia, what, what's our capacity percentage level over at the Family Service Center right now? Are we, are we pretty full?
Almost ninety-nine percent. We have the two small offices just across the hall from myself, otherwise we're full.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Robbie wasn't so bad, was it? So far.
That wasn't approval.
First, where do you put it, Tom?
Would it be possible to switch the break? I'm waiting for Cheryl. Cheryl was gonna, in case you had any additional, more detailed questions to ask.
Why don't we do some, a couple of committee reports? Kevin, can we start with you?
Oh.
Okay.
Yeah, well, I suppose it's okay. Let me just, oh, yeah, last week the only, I had two meetings, they were both last Thursday. It started off with the Greater Fargo-Moore Economic Development Group and that was fairly a non-eventful meeting, really. It was, the big news, the one interesting thing out of there was that there's a, and I guess I forgot the name of the city, but there's a group coming up from, from the city, I don't know if it's in, in Kansas, I can't remember the name of the city, but they're bringing about fifty people up here to take a look at what the Greater Fargo-Moore Economic Development has done and what's been going on with downtown and, and with Fargo and with some areas in, in Moorhead. And that was kind of encouraging that there's other people actually looking to what we've been doing up here in terms of abilities to grow our economic base here. And then at, that same day, we also had our Regional Juvenile Detention Meeting and we discussed quite a few things there. We went over the, where we were with the two thousand thirteen budget and we basically gave approval to the two thousand fourteen budget. And of the two thousand, Lori, just some notes for you maybe of the, the two thousand twelve overage that we, or revenues over expenditures we had, it was agreed to repay Clay County thirty-four thousand four hundred dollars, that's twenty-five percent, for the, what was at one time the one hundred and eighty to two hundred thousand dollar deficit that we, that we kind of said that we would take, provided that it was paid back over time. We did agree on that sixty-seven percent of the security upgrade to come out of those same funds for seventy-one thousand nine hundred and ten dollars. And then the balance of that, we used to buy down the two thousand fourteen bed rate. So, and I, I'm sure Steve will go over that stuff with you. And then we, all counties were asked to agree to the same bed purchases they did the previous year. We did have a, had did include a three point seven percent increase in per bed price. One note, Lori, and I think you'll remember last week after, after we met, I think Grant and I and Brian met with Steve and, and it was suggested that a portion of those non-member revenues that came in, a portion of that be applied to the budget, which it was, but only to the tune of probably fifty percent of it, so that, just because we're not sure of the, the trend, there was no trend to really go by, but, so we did incorporate about half of those non-member bed dollars into, into the budget. And I hope, and, and when we were done, we were still showing a projected revenues over expenditures in that area of about nine thousand dollars. So hopefully we'll, it'll do better than that and we can continue to, Clay County can continue to get paid back those funds as well as to keep the bed price in line. But the, the request for the bed purchase thing is in, is the agenda and addition that I added, we'll do when Steve's here. That's all I have.
Chief?
Just Kevin already mentioned our meeting with Steve earlier on the detention issues and then I had a Public Health Emergency Preparedness Oversight Group meeting that I'm involved with and mainly that meeting, we're, we're planning a summit to, to deal with emergency preparedness for public health, people from around the state and so, that's it for me.
Tuesday night I went to, attended the Mullen Township meeting, just held a regular meeting there and I got acquainted with those people. Last night I was at the Agassiz Recreation Trails Meeting at Fertile and there we pretty much went through the Joint Powers Agreement, the bylaws and stuff that we're updating and also looking at, going through inspection of the, of the trail, trying to see whether we can get together as a group and inspect the whole trail, so that's it.
John?
Last week there was Planning Commission Tuesday night and pretty routine stuff, but we do have some vacancies on the board now that we're, we're needing to, to fill, but also the, the one issue that, that conditional use permit that we, we dealt with was kind of interesting. There's a person wants to permission to, to mine gravel mine, some property, not a large one at all, on her, on her land, in, in order to create some ponds that then would become fish, fish farm. And we don't, in our, currently in our, in our policies have, have any listing at all for aquatic farming, so we will have to, in order to accommodate that in the future when she gets the, the area mined to the proper, proper landscape and so on, then she'll be back to, to try to get that permission to, to farm fish there. And it's primarily bait because of the difficulty now with all the invasive species to, to get bait that's, that's pure. And so it, it's also like an interesting venture and I don't know how it works in our, in our gravel, in our gravel pits, but it would be something that's, that's worthwhile looking at. So we'll be working to, to try to add that possibility to our ordinance to allow for, for that into the future, but so far we just granted her permit to do the gravel mining and she'll be back with a further request for that, but that was kind of a unique request, I thought. The, yesterday we had Lakeland Board Meeting, this time in Detroit Lakes, and some interesting grants that have been applied for working in the schools and we'll probably hear more about that if it's, if it's awarded. The afternoon there was a local foods meeting, which is part of our, a project of our Public Health Program, and we're, we've been working to connect producers and buyers with, for local foods and we've met a number of times pulling them together to discuss these, the problems and the possibilities and it's, it's getting pretty exciting. There's some, so a lot of work being done with the Prairie Roots, which is a food co-op that's been being established in, in the community and, which is, right now it's just online, there's not a physical place for it, but it allows for online purchasing and, and advertising of products and it's, it's kind of exciting to see this venture occur. It could be a big economic development thing for, for the community. So that, that's all I have.
On Tuesday, July sixteenth, Adult Mental Health Local Advisory Council, General Business Agency Reports, and we elevated new, elected rather, two new co-chairs who will take over in August. They are Ben Airy, who is the Board Chair of Social Connection, and Reginald Jansen, a Consumer. Thursday, July eighteenth, Metropolitan Council of Governments, there was General Business, Annual Evaluation of the Executive Director Wade Klein, and that turned out very good. We discussed and approved the two thousand fourteen, two thousand seventeen Minnesota Transportation Improvement Plan, considered the same for North Dakota, and then there were updates on other projects from the Executive Director. And going back to the Adult Mental Health, young lady named Dina Geisler is now the new Director of the Social Connection. That's all I have. We'll go to the First Lady and Cheryl Grandbois.
Okay, as you can see, we've, I've put in for one FTE. It's on page ten. And that is forty-five thousand four twenty-seven right now. You've all been out to the, to the driver's license and motor vehicle building and seen how busy that can be. We had over four thousand additional transactions in our motor vehicle last year and really the only way to handle those is to get in an extra person and then also hopefully we can modernize the building. The combination of that would really help out, out there and you, you've all been there when it's busy and it's, the line's out the door and there's really no place for anybody to stand and, in addition to the additional transactions, the state is actually having us do more of the work. So instead of just selling and sending all the paperwork in, we're actually having to enter that data here. And maybe Cheryl can elaborate on that a little bit.
We're doing a lot more like with driver's license and motor vehicle. Everybody that comes in, they have to bring in proof of who they are. Like the truck drivers, we enter all their medical information and stuff and that has to be recorded right away. And we do a triple check, which is a nationwide check of everyone, so everybody that comes in to review their driver's license, we run their name or number and if you have a violation in another state, they print out a letter showing what needs to be done, you get that straightened out first. And all these things, we do more of the state's work and it kind of bogs us down. It takes longer because each person takes longer to wait on.
Have you started to fall behind yet and if not, will you eventually, without additional help?
I'm sure we will, Wayne, because when we went through our lean training, we tried some new ways to do things and one of them was we do all the dealers in Fargo-Moorhead and they drop them off because with all our other customers, it's hard to, you know, someone would come in and they'd have twenty transactions and it would take a while, so we had a lot of disgruntled customers. So we have a person, we have the same amount of staff and we have a designated person that does dealer work, you know, but some days it's like this and once you get behind, it's really, really hard. Like right before I came today, there was a gal on the phone, we changed our answering machine, we did that, and she's like, hi, you know, I heard everything you said, but, you know, but they still want to talk to a live person. So between answering the phone, you know, waiting, it's, it, it kind of gets us bogged down and it's hard to get caught up. Yeah, so yes.
So it says revenue and transactions have increased from the state. How did, do we get a percentage of the money that comes in or how so?
Right, but actually I did increase our budget by seventy thousand dollars. The forty thousand dollars for the additional transactions plus the driver's license fee went up three dollars.
That'll-
And so I included thirty, which actually I think it'll be more than that, so I could maybe add another ten, but we did increase the budget by seventy thousand dollars, so.
Our share that comes from the state?
Will be more.
Right, the driver's licenses will be eight dollars.
Our office fee per application.
So what we get back from the state will more than cover the request here.
Yeah, that, that was the point I was going to make. It's, we have here the new request in expenditures, but we don't have the, the new information in report necessarily of the revenue and I, that, that is extremely important. And this is something that, that I occasionally hear about from our people there that, what can you do to improve that? Because most of our, all of our citizens who drive visit that building once a year at least, right? They have to come there once a year. And if the, if the increased revenues are there, I think it's important that we, this is one that I really want to support. I, I think, and I've told this to Lori, I think it's one that is doable just from the standpoint that the revenue that it's raised also suggests that we should put more into it. And I, the fact that on some days you have lines out the door and, and we shouldn't be making our people wait an hour in line if at all possible.
No, and then they get upset with us and sometimes we lose business because they don't want to wait and they'll go to Holly, you know.
I've actually, I've actually had some of your employees tell me that they've been cussed at and-
Oh, we have, we have.
And it's, and it's really unfortunate if they understand the full story, as you've explained it today, where you have all those additional duties that you're also doing. We, we need to, we need to, we don't need something that gives us a negative-
No, because we're-
-reputation from our public when, when, when we don't have to. And your revenues are there and I'm going to do everything- And your revenues are there and I'm going to do everything I can to, Lori, to support this request.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Brian, would you like to give your report or would you rather wait till the end of the meeting?
Mr. Chair, whatever you wish.
How about now?
Okay. Well, it can be quite quick. And matter of fact, last Tuesday, there was a retirement over in Family Service Center. And I just want to mention that your Chair, Commissioner Ingersoll, did attend that and presented. Mr. Murphy, who was very, very, very appreciative of the recognition by the county. And I just think that's worth mentioning. It seemed to mean a lot to him. Darren and I attended a seminar on, last Thursday, and listened to 20 different presenters. And very, very interesting and educational. Just made some good contacts for some collaborations with the university and things over there. I thought that was really good. Tended the FM, the Fargo-Moor diversion meetings, that was last Thursday, I guess it was. No, that was one week ago. We had our administrative meeting Friday morning. I get these diversion meetings, there's so many of them. It was Friday morning, the administrative diversion meeting. And things are progressing, lots more questions than answers. And, you know, we get into a lot of discussions on the Minnesota and North Dakota side and what's going to happen on the breakdown and when are the authorization going to be granted? And what is the state of Minnesota legislature going to do and on and on and on. So it's always interesting, I guess. A lot of budget work this last week. Had the meeting with Commissioner Whelan and Campbell with Juvenile Center. That really seems to, I just think Steve deserves a lot of credit. I think he's done a really good job in working with the Commissioners and the Board on that. Keeps them pretty well informed. Bruce has made some real progress on the mosquito traps. In fact, it sounds like Vector Control is going to do reflections for us this year. And then we're going to work out a contract with them for next year and we can consider that. Seems like a minimal cost to continue to do that work. In fact, Vector Control over there, Bruce told me yesterday that they have expanded their services and they're going to do some testing next year for the West Isles right there on site too. So that's, that's good for the community, it's good for the health of the community. So real pleased on the results on that. That's about it, Mr. Chair.
I just want to follow up. Brian, on the, you know, you talked about the diversion discussion. And one of the big topics has been the Minnesota-North Dakota and the financing coming from Minnesota. And we know what Moorhead's position is. And it's one that, right, that I also agree with, that we can't have any liability right now beyond what we put into our annual budget for. And I know in the past, when we, when we're going to be getting to that and it's going to be coming before this Board again, the amendment to the Joint Powers for the funding. And in the past, we had, Michelle Lawson was involved with those discussions and all the legal. And I think we want to make sure that Jenny is involved, basically to protect the county's interests so that we have to, everybody needs to understand that the major financial benefit of this has to be from the state of Minnesota for any Minnesota share, other than what we budget and pay for on an annual basis. And then in the same respect, we also had, there was also representation from the Buffalo Red Watershed for the same purpose, their legal. So I think it would be worthwhile to contact Bruce Albright to make sure that they are comfortable with having their legal representative make sure that there's no additional liability on the part of the watershed as well.
Right. Thank you, I think that's an excellent suggestion. And that was one of the topics in regards to language clarity and reference to the obligation of Minnesota that will be more clear in this joint powers renewal.
And, and don't get me wrong, in talking with the Chairman of the Diversion Authority, Mr. Vanu from Cass County, he understands this and agrees that this language should be in place. So it's not like there's a real argument amongst the two sides. It's just that we just want to make sure there's clarity.
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
We're recessed.
Back to order at this time. Jail Administrator Julie Stavat, Chief Deputy Matt Ciro and our Sheriff Bill Burtquist. Welcome, lady and gentleman.
Good morning.
Hear what you have to say.
Brian, you got some page numbers for us?
I do. Page 31, 32, 33, 34.
Thank you.
And 37.
Thank you.
Good morning.
I'm probably the one that's going to say the least.
I have lots to say.
Talk into that microphone. I think we'll start with the sheriff's side of it because Julie's going to have the bigger discussions.
Okay, I'll kick it off. There's one omission in our budget on the sheriff's office side. And that was on the revenue side, the SRO that the Board approved a few months ago. I did not include the revenue in there at the time. I didn't really know how to do that. I'm getting reimbursed, the sheriff's office getting reimbursed for this school resource officer by two different schools in the course of months over 2013 and 2014 as we start this. So, and it's really reimbursement for salary, para, health insurance, all of those items. And how you put that in and...
For nine months of the year.
Right.
Right, is that what they decided? It's not really a two-thirds.
Correct, for nine months of the year. So I talked to Mr. Berg and Lori a little bit and we decided we're just going to put it in miscellaneous revenue.
Yeah, it's actually in there now, in their copy.
In their copy, okay. So you see it, but I don't. But that's where you're going to see it's, that number with, and it's an accurate number now with the deputy that's been assigned is $31,800. Going on to expenditures, I ended up moving some accounts around a little bit. And that's just normal course of business, trying to, some areas we're saving money and some others I have to increase spending a little bit. The biggest chunk, as you can see, would be fuel, gas and oil. I increased that by $8,800. Price of fuel is sometimes it gets out of hand and other times it kind of settles down. But I found most of that out of the equipment over 500 account. As you notice, on the revenue side, we have an enormous increase in pistol permit funds that we've seen because of the recent events. That, those, or that revenue I get for pistol permits is statutorily limited on what we can spend that money on. Some of it is equipment, so the printers and that kind of things that we have to buy to normally operate normally, I can use that money, so that's, we're not going to really lose that $8,800.
How many pistol permits does that account for?
How many? You know, John, I can't even remember now. It's, we do more in about three months than we've done all year historically now. It's just, it's an incredible amount.
In one month, we did like 65. One week, sorry, 65.
One week?
It's an incredible amount.
Which we can take out their, you know, their partial, but they do forward them out of that money too, so.
I think it shows a lot of false security out there.
So finally, new request. I've asked for an additional $5,000 in roster employee salary and then some para and Medicare to offset that. And that's really, as a result of the new rules coming down in January, we're going to, we anticipate losing six more beds at the jail. And we're going to have to increase our transports. I've met with Julie and Lieutenant Hagan with the Support Services Division on how we're going to do that. Some of it I don't want to make public because it's going to, it involves how we're going to transport these people. But we are going to go to somewhat of a set schedule now. We're, currently today, it's not, we don't have specific days where we do this. We do it as a number. But when we increase these inmates out of county housing by six, I think it's going to be 24, 26 now on average. 21. Or 21. We're going to be forced to do this a certain number of times a week. And there's just no other way to do it because as Julie will probably discuss, the jail can now send out inmates that if they can look into the future, if they don't have anything going on for four or five days a week, they would send those people out to be housed out of county. Now, we're not going to be so selective and someone may go today and have to come back tomorrow for a court hearing or a doctor. So we're just forced to make a lot more transports on a regular basis, so. Most of that transport on our side, we believe we can use our current more transport staff and we're going to use patrol staff. We're going to take a day patrol position and take them off the street for a little bit every week to help with those transports. So we're not asking on the sheriff's office side to do that. We think we're going to be able to, we're going to try it for a year with our own staff and see what happens.
Any questions for Matt?
On that, on that transport, because we're staying within the jails we use. We're using Wilkin and we're using...
Tri-County Community Corrections.
Tri-County.
Possibly Hubbard.
Possibly Hubbard. But so in terms of round trip time, is it, you just, is there a lot of time they have to spend waiting in one spot? Or you just go get them and you bring them back and...
We estimate it about four hours.
Four hours.
That's a minimum. And that's from the time you walk into a facility, whether it's ours or somebody else's, and you're, they're booking out three, four inmates, collecting their property, walk out the door, get in the car, drive from here to Crookston, and then now you're round there while the other institution is rebooking them in because they make sure the property and the meds are there. So, so a trip to Crookston's about four hours, as we're estimating.
John?
I was told that Crookston was planning, in order to get more inmates coming, that they were planning on offering travel, that they, transport. Have they talked to us about that at all? Since we've been paying it, I suppose they're not even mentioning it to us. But I think they're offering that to other counties.
No, they haven't talked to us about it.
There is some talk with the US Marshals they were willing to do that for, but for us at this point, no.
How about if...
It was a Commissioner from Norman County that told me that, that they were offering transports.
Have we negotiated that with them at all because it's...
We have talked to them about that. We told them we'd be interested in something like that, but that's, we just met with them two months ago and they were not ready for that at this time.
Okay.
Well, they might not have been ready, but...
They weren't looking at providing transports for us in the future.
I think Wilkin has done enough.
Wilkin is, we have got Wilkin to do our transports.
And how about Hubbard?
No. We, right now we're not using Hubbard, that's just our backup location.
But that's my point because those places are all...
Competitive.
They're all, they're all very interested in revenue. And I would imagine that all of those facilities are strongly dependent on the 21 that we're sending out on a daily basis. So, I mean, it's like our juvenile, regional juvenile detention center. We offer free transportation to all of our member counties. And if we didn't, we would lose some of our members. That's, so that's, so, you know, we should be aggressively seeking that from them.
I'd like to see that myself because that, it's a large logistics...
You're in charge.
Right. If they're, if they're open to it, I'd like to see what they have to say. I'm assuming they would, if I was in my charges more, because when you get to that number of inmates out, it's not, can you have them here sometime during the week? It's, I have two of these guys that need to be here by eight, or 8:30 for court the next day. This guy needs to be here at 1:30 for a doctor.
But Matt, Matt, the whole, you know, the whole thing about that is, is a lot of these, a lot of these facilities really need to have our inmates to help make their jail affordable for them. Because they are, they're not in the situation where we're at with a smaller jail, outdated jail that's over capacity. They've all built new jails to new standards that have all kinds of room and they don't have any revenue.
We did have a conversation, I don't remember with which one, but they wanted, of course, a contract and they wanted the numbers to be a little bit higher because they, you know, like to say for, we'd have to pay for the 10 beds no matter what, how many people are there. But they're kind of looking for that, hopefully we only have eight beds, so they still get more money to help them with their costs. But I mean, we can truly discuss it again with them.
Well, I would encourage it.
That was going to be my question about a contract with them because if, you know, we're probably in a position, at least for a while, where we could go on a yearly basis and guarantee so many beds to them. I mean, we wouldn't be at much risk of not filling those beds, I would think. So that may, you know, I mean, if we, right now you don't do that, right? You don't contract, you don't guarantee them anything and then they charge us so much a day. And so, you know, if we're going to be in a position where we know we're going to have, you know, 10 or 15 or 20 prisoners every day, you know, somebody may be willing to give us a pretty good deal to get those on a yearly basis, so.
No, we split between the two. We split between Wilkin and Tri-County.
But for a while we had them, right when they were first built, I think they used 10 beds, we used 12 beds. And that's why they were a little bit easier on us, they helped us a lot. And it really is what, 40 minutes, you know, for them to get yours.
I would think a contract with them would make a lot of sense for, you know, we, one or the other. We know we could, yeah.
Wilkins, but how many beds do they have?
22.
That's their maximum. They've got to leave some for themselves, so.
I think, yeah, like at one point we had 12 of their 22.
I think they'd like to run around 12.
Julie, anything else you'd like to...
I think I'll get into a little more detail when they get to me.
Anything else on the sheriff's office side, the law enforcement side?
Julie?
I'll touch briefly with emergency management, Brian's not here. No changes in his revenue or expenditures. I would anticipate, he believes that the grant will be about the same, which is, it's probably $6,000 less than we've seen in the last few years, so.
Just one more thing before Julie starts. Just so you guys know, we've been discussing the canine, you know, trying to get one back. Right now, we're in the process of the donation thing. Hopefully by 2015, we would have the funds to again buy a canine. So if you do hear things that we're out there soliciting, it's just more for donations at this point, so.
Okay. We'll start with my expenditures. I have a couple increases I'd like to talk about. The first one would be the Outta County Board. I'm asking for an increase in $53,000. And I'm asking for an increase on that because in 2012, we shipped out over 15 people a day. And that's more than we predicted that we would have. So I base the expenditures on 15, actually 21 inmates out a day with our additional six beds that we're going to lose. Currently, we're only seeing at nine out, so our numbers are actually a little bit lower than they were last year. By the time of the budget, I based it all on the 2012 numbers. Okay? The other big increase would be prisoner care, which is 81,000. That figure is based on our last three years of what we spent for medical costs. Now, we have taken some steps to try and reduce those costs and I'd just like to go over those briefly. Last June, we were able to get the MA rates from the hospitals that reduced our costs for doctor visits, labs and all that. We have seen an improvement in that area. Another thing we have been working on is increasing our medical furloughs. So if we have somebody in our jail who is not there for a serious crime or is a danger, we will utilize a medical furlough. So what we do is we release them with the judge's approval. And then when their medical condition has improved, we take them back into the jail. And that saves us that medical cost at the hospital. Another thing we have coming in 2014, with the Patient Protection and Affordable Care Act, all inmates that have an in-hospital stay, we can ask for MA, medical assistance, to pick up that tab and they are willing to do that if they qualify for the program. Just as an example, in the last couple of years, the jail has averaged about $32,000 in patient stays. So we're hoping that one of the duties, this new request we have would be to, if somebody is not on medical assistance at the time of booking, that they get them applied for the program. You can actually apply for MA after the fact. So if we have somebody who's in the hospital, we could have this officer... So, if we have somebody who's in the hospital, we could have this officer get the paper filled out and submitted and MA will go back a month for doctor bills. So, we're, we're hoping we can maybe recoup some of these costs. Now, I didn't figure any of that into our, the budget I proposed because at the time, we didn't have all the information. So, I'm thinking there will be some savings there that we can, we can look for. And if it's based on our average, it's about $32,000. So, that'll be one thing we will be trying to work on in 2014.
Julie, who would be paying the medical assistance then?
Well, there's, see, there's Minnesota Care and then there's medic, medical assistance through the federal government. From Minnesota-
I mean, is that another budget item? Is someone else in the county pays or?
No.
No.
It's the state, state, federal.
Yeah.
Which still comes out of both.
Well, it does. The other big cost we have in our medical is our detox fees. Over the, we've averaged over the last three years, $37,000 that we pay to detox. So, that is more of a line shuffle. So, but I just wanted you to be aware, that's the kind of money we are spending out of our budget for, for our detox services. Does anybody have any questions on those two items? Then we'll just move on to our new requests. And my new request does include a full-time officer. And what this full-time officer would be doing, would they, they would be assisting a RAP officer in the overcrowding situation at the jail. Currently, the RAP officer is half-time RAP and half-time Outta County Coordinator. Currently, he spends over half his time coordinating the inmates that he has to ship out. What this new person would do is they would assist in that coordination with additional six inmates that we would have to ship out. They would be responsible for the bookings and the releases. They would be coordinating with courts, medical staff, probation and the attorneys to figure out when these people need to be back and, and make, generating a list so we always have a list available so we know who we could ship out. As Matt talked about earlier, we currently try to pick people who have a, a date out in the future so they don't have to come back right away. When we start shipping 21 people out, we'll be shipping anybody we can find who we can ship out for at least two days. So, you're going to see an increase in the number of bookings and releases, the processing, contacting all the other agencies and the transports out of the jail. In addition, we would like this person to also assist in the transfer of these inmates to the other jails. It'd be a portion where they would actually sit in with the transport deputy to the other agencies so that they can ensure that all the property, all the medication and all the information that's necessary goes to their agency.
Julie, when you say you ship out everybody you can, what, what are the criteria that you use? I mean, are they, who can't be shipped out? I mean, what's the-
Well, generally, the other jails do not want to be who's a suicidal or has severe medical condition that they might not be capable of taking care of. I know we've had recent issues where we've had people we wanted to send to Wilken County. They do not have the medical staff to take care of some of our inmates. We have to be selective when we send them to Wilken. Tri-County does have a, have more medical staff on duty and they can take some of these people. But as a general rule, they prefer to have people who are on no serious medical conditions. They will take people with medications, obviously. But when we get to the point where we're shipping out so many people, we're going to have to work with Tri-County on, on these inmates because they are more staff intensive than what we're currently sending them. So, the next request, all these, you can see are all related to the full-time officer. I did add some part-time money in there. And that's just so you have somebody who can backfill this full-time person when they're gone. We can, we could not, not have somebody fill in if they're on vacation or, or if they're extended sick leave. Because with our numbers, it's not something one person can absorb. This, this number of inmates is going to be very time-consuming and complicated to coordinate. So-
Julie, I, I'm just wondering if, if the, do we, do we have, do any of our local universities or two-year colleges offer correctional programs in the local area?
Yes, the tech school.
Okay. I, I'm just, I'm just wondering if, and do they require some internships as part of their class?
I believe they do.
Is this something that could work in that regard that, or is it, or is it too complicated?
It'd be too complicated because you'd also want this person to be able to book and release.
Okay.
And for DSC requirements, you have to train them as a corrections officer to have a hands-on contact with an inmate.
Okay. Okay, well, that throws that one.
Sorry. Yeah. And their internships usually don't run very long, so by, I mean, you would have to train them in, so.
Yeah. Well, you know, then, and the other question is, is do we have, do we have other opportunities so within either of your departments to maybe take better use of, of, you know, what's helping the universities and part of the education process and getting some of those people to do their internships with, with Clay County?
We use those in emergency management and MSU has a, an emergency management program over there.
Okay, yeah.
And they have been very helpful. I think they wrote Glendon's Emergency Operations Plan and they've helped, I think, Brian Green with a few things. But, you know, obviously, MSU has a large criminal justice program. We don't use them to really do any work. They just observe and-
The reason I, the reason I ask that is, is I, I know over the years, our Regional Juvenile Center has used that a lot. They've used the students going to our local universities as roster employees in a lot of ways while they're in school. And I, you know, obviously, if you can, if you can take advantage of some of that, it's helping them get through theirs and it, and it also helps reduce our-
We, we actually do utilize that quite a bit too as our roster employee. We'll hire a lot of college students. Many of them started at the college at the same time, maybe even they started at the jail and they've worked their way through school, going to, to the local colleges. And they've been, you know, great officers. It's a great opportunity for them, especially if they're going into criminal justice, they get to learn how to deal with inmates. But again, that's, that's a corrections officer.
Well, I know, I've talked to people in that field too and their, their ultimate goal is they want to be in a, in a deputy squad car or, you know, being a deputy and, and just have to start somewhere.
And that, yeah, and that's why you see a turnaround in the jail because a lot of our staff that we leave end up going to be a police officer someplace. And I think it's a good, a good thing we provide.
And the biggest difference about the interns, when an intern comes in, they basically watch and ride. If we wanted to use them for these things, we would have to hire them as a roster because they have to have their self-defense and all those issues, the classes taken care of. And, and we're not going to put somebody, an intern through that program, especially not being insured under us or an employee.
Well, I think, Bill, what I was referring to is, is some of these people and some of the programs they're in, they've finished the entire program, but in order to get their degree, they have to spend six months to a year actually in their field, doing work. I'm not talking about somebody who just is starting their first year in correction school, you know. So, so these would be people who have gone through-
And we have two to three interns every year.
Okay. Good enough?
Okay. The next item would be, after the full-time employee, would be our computer system at the jail. There's a computer system that currently controls both courthouse and the jail. And this computer controls doors, alarms and intercoms. It's from the late 1990s. When the 2003 construction of the courthouse was done, they were able to tap into that computer to operate the, the security equipment at the courthouse in the main entrance. I'm recommending that this computer get replaced. It's past its prime. And what will happen is the two systems will be separate so that the courthouse and the jail will no longer be connected by that security system, which is not necessary. We have, did request this in 2012.
Does the, does the court security here agree with that?
Yes, it's, it's, they, they're fine with it. I've talked with them before.
Okay.
And how much is that?
Forty-one-five, forty-one thousand five hundred.
Is that, so, Brian, is that a, is that a, in a line item right now in the budget?
Yes, it is.
Under equipment?
Yes.
Okay. I believe that's the last of my requests. All my other requests have to do with a new person. There's an increase in uniforms, some training. And again, the prisoner board, Outta County, 113,880. And that's based on six beds times 365 days a year at $52 a day.
Any questions for Julie?
I have one more item, the dispatch.
Oh, yeah, that's it.
I'm not, I'm sure you gentlemen are signing things every day. But as a, as a reminder, the four rural cities agreed to keep the reimbursement amount the same for 2014 and '15. So, we're going to receive 28,620 dollars from those cities. No, that's wrong, that's wrong, isn't it right?
About 59 or so, 50 or 59, probably.
Oh, revenue, 61,445, so, including the maintenance. So, after 2015, it sounds like they want to quit paying that reimbursement amount.
So, they're going to not have 911 service to them or?
Well, they'll have 911.
Well, that we have to give them. I mean, I've got a choice in that one.
You know, I saw in, in the information Brian provided us that Dispatch is looking at three new positions now and three more shortly. I mean, that's a big increase. I, I hope the board over there is watching that to see that it's justified. I mean, you're looking at hundreds of thousands of dollars for six new communications officers.
But when they hired, or when they took on West Fargo, they never hired any more dispatchers.
Well, yeah. But I, you know, I, back when we started, I don't, I don't know, that was necessary based on, you know, now, you know, if you look at, you know, the paper in the recent few days, West Fargo is blaming to be over 30,000 people now. So, I hope their share of the cost of this thing is being adjusted accordingly. So, because it's population-based, it always was.
Yeah, and 2010, that's a small show.
Well, yeah, you have to wait eight more years.
I wouldn't think you'd have to wait that long. They make adjustments.
That's probably something that Moore needs to look at then. And when you're looking at that significant growth, I mean, they should be paying their, you know, more, you know, I assume they should be paying more than they probably are in terms of the percentage. They were the last ones to come in, you know, when we started that thing. So, you know, they shouldn't be allowed now to, you know, you know, to grow at that level, you know, over a matter of a few years and, you know, invade, you know, on a third less population, so.
It was discussed a lot and, because of that, that it's too long to wait for every 10 years, especially the fastest-growing cities.
I didn't see that, but 12.4% of the total bill is what they pay, so.
Yeah, I don't know what percentage the population is based on, so it's-
Brian, I, I wonder if, I think it would be appropriate to get an update on, while we're in this budget process too, where we were with the capital improvement projects that we have. The bond that was there, we, I know we got some very attractive bids that were under what we'd estimated. And in this process, it'd be nice to get an update on what's left and what projects we might want to consider adding to that. And could this, could this 41,500 be included in that? I think we need to try all these different things that we can here, so.
Right.
Could we get an update on that if we could?
Sure. And, and we, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Campbell, we did talk about that last year, that if that goes on the blink, we feel that that bonding is broad enough to include that 41,500. And I think also, there's about $8,000 in the Internal Service Fund-
There's a little money in there.
-that was put in for that. So, yes, that could be certainly an item that, and, and just hard dollars, I think we're between 500,000 and 600,000 dollars left in that. But we've got motor vehicle on the horizon, that's going to be pretty substantial.
Right, yeah, I know there's some other, some other issues.
So, yeah, so I think we'd be all right in that regards. But yes, an update would be appropriate.
Thank you.
Matt, on the, on the dispatcher thing, that the three, they're looking for three positions this year? What's our share of that? You know, I mean-
Well, the total, yeah, it's 10%.
To, we're 10% for everything, okay.
Right. What was the increase? Twenty-eight thousand 620 dollars increased from last year.
So, so Matt, when they ask for three, so that, that's for around the clock, right?
Right.
They originally asked for six and we agreed upon, not at one time.
So, the six would have been two new ones, 24/7.
Correct.
You know, I, and I, you know, I mean, the percentage that, that we pay is probably accurate to 10%, but Morehead was at, you know, nearly 20, or yeah, 30%. So, it, it doesn't make sense if Morehead's population is 38,000 or 9,000 and West Fargo's over 30,000 and Morehead's paying 30% and they're paying 12. I mean, they, they need some readjusting as far as I'm concerned, so, you know, so they pay their fair share for the services that they decided later on they wanted, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve, you're on. Steve Larson, Director of the Juvenile Detention Centers. Welcome, Steve.
Good morning. How's everybody today?
Good, good.
Just have a couple of informations packed in here for you guys.
Steve, when you're done with your presentation on your budget too, I'd ask for the addition to go over the, the contract that Clay County signed, so if you can jump into that.
Thank you. Well, as you guys know, the juvenile, the West Central Regional Juvenile Center has two programs that we run out of, out of our building. We have the 24-bed secure co-ed facility and a 14-bed co-ed non-secure facility. The budgets are, are separate. The secure budget is run through a cooperative service agreement through 10 member counties. Each year, we provide a, a budget based on expenses. We come up with a bed purchase price and our 10 counties agree to purchase a specific number of beds based on their usage. And that, that bed purchase price is agreed upon through each county and, and we move forward through there. Our secure program provides four different programs. So, we have secure detention. We have a 30, 60, 90, 120-day treatment program. We also have that same program with the chemical dependency program that we utilize through Drake Counseling Services. And in June of 2012, we established our Pathways Sex Offender Program that deals with moderate-level residents. And we've seen a, an increase of usage from our, both our members and non-member counties through that. And that shows in our, in our budget explanation for this year. Our request from all of our member counties this year is a 3.7% increase over last year's bed purchase price of 74, $77,000 per bed. We are looking for Clay County to purchase, continue to purchase the seven beds that they've done in the past. And we are asking that our member counties continue to purchase 10.25 beds per day. We did have an advisory board meeting last Thursday and this board, this budget was presented to, to that board. And we received preliminary approval to move forward. So, all of the counties are taking their bed purchase contracts back to their counties to receive approval from, from their boards. In talking with them, it sounds that they're pleased with the, the process of how things have worked out and there weren't any counties that openly shared that they didn't anticipate continuing with the bed purchasing plan for next year. So, we do have some additional, because of that additional non-member usage that we've begun to, to see because of our Pathways Program and also based on some of the other programs of tying in, we've seen some other additional usage of, from our chemical dependency program. In 2014, we're looking to add a line item to address the non, non-member revenues. And we're looking to add a half a bed per day, which is roughly $38,000 to our, to our budget. Additional revenues include rent from our felony Department of Corrections Office and our juvenile probation office. We receive a small amount of money from the Morehead School District to deal with our transition program for when kids are released from our program. And we also are part of the National School Lunch Program where we receive funds for being a part of reimbursement for food as part of that program. So, those are our, our revenue sources for 2014. So those are our, our revenue sources for two thousand fourteen, so. Does anybody have any questions on that portion? Okay. In our expenses section, we really maintained, maintaining our budget as much as we can there. In, in two thousand fourteen, there's really just two main areas that we're focusing on as an, with an increase. In both our secure and our non-secure program, our roster staff make up about fifty percent of our, our total hours worked, and we've had a number of, of meetings over the last six to eight months with, with Commissioners, the PIC meeting with Brian, Lori, and Darren. And today, I would be requesting as part of this budget and that three-point-seven percent increase, that two of our, two, two positions be converted from roster hours to full-time, to, to a full-time benefit package. We would be looking to add an overnight position on line thirteen, and also a, a day and evening counselor position from line, on line sixteen. So, and again, most of, a, a, a big chunk of that, the funds that would go to those benefit packages would come from hours that we would be converting already from existing hours from our roster and converting those to full-time, so.
Steve, would you explain to the rest of the board here why it's important to have that full-time person on, and, and what's happening right now, how we're leaving some things basically unattended? Would you?
Yes. One, one of our, our main concerns, of course, is liability. While we have, we feel like we have some very good roster staff that work for us, some of the challenges that, that we provide is these are, in most cases, residents that are, excuse me, students that are in college who are earning their degrees but do not yet have their degrees, and a lot of times, this is a, a first-time experience for them into the field, and while school is a great, a great, gives them a great, great backbone, I think that when you actually get in on the floor and deal with some of the things that they have to deal with, they certainly, roster staff certainly aren't as, as, as positive as, as having full-time. The other issue that we have is one of the goals that when we set out with this process and, and budgeting piece was trying to get full-time staff on every shift. There are different times right now where, you know, we're hiring our roster staff at between, you know, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two years old, and Friday nights at ten o'clock, we're turning the building over to, to these, these people, which, again, we feel are good people to hire, yet at the same point, some of the challenging kids that we, that we face, we'd like to have, you know, more experience in, in those positions, making, making those decisions, so. And, and just another brief piece is that, you know, we, we maintain with the national, national healthcare reform, we've been working on some different issues to make sure that our, our roster staff don't fall into that category, and, and our roster staff, you know, they don't stay as long as, as we'd like a lot of times, and it takes about seven hundred dollars to train a roster staff before their first shift, and right now, about, in our secure portion, about seventy-five percent of our staff are, you know, have less than a year experience, so the challenge is, is that we're having to hire and, and then spend additional training, training money that, again, two staff wouldn't necessarily solve our issue. We still would need to maintain a high number of roster hours, but it certainly would be a, a good step in that direction, and would provide the coverage for that overnight.
Yeah, I, I just wanna make a comment in regards to this, this request of going to, to full-time, you know, and, and what we're going through right now, that, that would be extremely difficult. However, the full member group really, was really concerned about potential liability issues, leaving that facility to, you know, similar to what I talked about with the Sheriff's Department, with these roster employees, were basically in the education to get there, but probably not in a position to, if you get one of those in there at night, as you said, if you turn the keys over, are they really responsive enough to make a, a good decision that could really avoid some serious liability? And, and our member counties, their answer to that was no, and they, they really agreed that we needed to get to this one full-time person on staff all the time, and, and a position that I, I agree with as well, the, the liability out there is just too, too extreme to, not do that.
On the spreadsheet that you sent with your?
Yes.
Packet, you included after COLA costs for two thousand fourteen, isn't that a double listing, then?
Yes, Mr. Chair, it could be.
Yeah?
Okay. But those will be worked out in the final numbers.
Any other questions for the secure portion? Okay. Our, our non-secure budget, again, is a fourteen-bed co-ed program. This is a Clay County program. It was established in nineteen ninety-seven to, to meet the needs of Clay County, but we do provide our program to be used by other counties, and it has been. Right now, we're going through, since ninety-seven, we're in our busiest twelve-month stretch than we've ever had. Non-secure is, one, is a, is a usage of, I think, the good work that our, our staff are doing there, and also a, a less restrictive option for, for detention is being utilized also. In, in this section, budget explanation, we utilize our budget five-point-two-five residents per day from Clay County. Our per diems that we're recommending for, for two thousand fourteen are two hundred and four dollars for our evaluation program and our Pathways Program, and then a hundred and sixty-dollar charge for our, our consequence program. In our auto-county revenue, we're, we're looking at to, to bring in about four-point-seven-five residents per day. We've been utilizing a great number of non-member, or, excuse me, non-Clay County residents this year, and part of that has to do, again, we, we added the Pathways Sex Offender Program and that, and the non-secure floor also, so that increased the possible revenue source for, for two thousand fourteen. Again, non-secure receives rent from both the felony and the juvenile probation offices. They also participate in the National School Lunch Program, and the internal fund transfer is, sums up all the different revenues that we have for two thousand fourteen. In our expense section, basically, we're, we're in the same spot there, as I've explained, with about fifty percent roster, fifty percent full-time, and we would be looking to convert one, one part-time position into a full-time benefit package. There, we are looking to add an overnight position to what Kevin was speaking about earlier, about making sure that we maintain full-time staff on all the shift, on all shifts on the overnight, we would, we would utilize that, that person as, on a rotating basis through the weekends, so. That, again, would, would, look, when we go to the two thousand fourteen budget, adding that, we would be, because we would be able to see some additional revenues, projecting additional revenues, and also transferring some of those roster hours and converting them to the full-time hours, we would be looking at about an additional seventeen thousand eight hundred and five dollars per this request, so we'd be able to save quite a bit of money in, in doing the conversion process and the additional revenues. Anybody have any questions?
Kevin, you have an addition?
Yeah, just, just before, just before we get to that, I, I wanna back up to the script, I just looked at this now, and when we, when we approved the budget on Thursday, it was showing a nine-thousand-dollar revenues over expenditures. What happened between Thursday and today?
We, we have a fund balance that we utilized in, from the revenues over expenditures that we, that we show for our, our advisory board, but as far as our budget, Lori doesn't allow us to put that in as a, showing that as a revenue on this budget, so it's actually there.
Okay.
It's just that we, we're not, we, we don't have a spot for it to show on this budget. So we are, we're still projecting nine thousand dollars over, over, our revenues over expenditures, so.
Okay. Do you wanna, do you wanna get into our contract, Steve?
Sure. Again, each year, I come to the board and, and looking for continued support with our bed purchasing plan. This year, we are looking for Clay County again to purchase seven beds. Each bed is seventy-seven thousand dollars, which is a total of five hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars, or, or forty-four thousand nine hundred and sixteen dollars and sixty-seven cents per month. I think that, you know, we've, we've spent a lot of time in, in the last few years with the bed purchasing, and it's certainly been a positive, had a positive impact on our program, so we could look for that continued support from the board.
There's a resolution, right?
Yeah. I, I have a.
That's right here.
Mr. Chair, I have. Yep, I have a master copy.
I'm moving to approve.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Motion is carried.
Thank you very much.
Anything else for the good of the order?
Before Steve leaves, I think, and I, I guess I could say this about most every other department head, but I think it's just appropriate, Steve was a fairly new department head when I came on board here, you guys had selected him from on board, he's done just a fantastic job, and he really knows his, his, he, his facts, he works with his advisory board and the commissioners, I think, extremely well, and, and has just done a terrific job, and, and I just want him to know that, that, that he does a very, very good job.
Steve, we all agree.
Thank you guys very much.
It's not that difficult keeping fifty county commissioners happy.
No, no.
Yeah, I, I too wanna thank Steve for your work involvement in this, it's very good.
Thank you guys for your support.
Oh, no, I reached that. So, Mr. Chair, before we adjourn, I, I just, because we're way earlier, I just, you know, maybe we can have a little brief discussion about what we talked about today, and, and one of the things that, that strikes me here, and obviously, we all know that, that this has to come down, because it's just, what we're talking about isn't even be allowed by the state in its current proposed form, but one of the, and I, I know this is probably gonna ruffle some feathers, but one of the areas that I think we, when it comes to all of our external agencies, and I know we've used this in the past, I don't believe that we should grant any external agencies any greater percentage of an increase than what we're allowing with our own county and our own county departments. I, when we're struggling to maintain what, and I understand they're all significantly important in their own way, but, but when we're having outside agencies being granted higher increases than what we're allowing our own county departments, I, I'm gonna struggle with that one, so, and it may be, I would certainly like to hear the other commissioners' opinions on that, but, if they have any.
Well, I think we have to judge each thing, you know, on its own, but I, I agree that there shouldn't, unless it's really an unusual circumstance, an external agency shouldn't get any higher raise than the increase than our own, but.
Let me interject something here. Julie's, say somebody's asking for a hundred thousand dollars, what percentage is that of their budget? Whatever. Is that what you're talking about? Are we talking about a percent?
I'm talking about an overall average percent that, that we're doing as a county for, for the functions that we have to provide as a county. Obviously, there's issues with corrections that's completely out of her control, the fact that we now have to ship six more inmates a day out. It's either that, or it's a new jail that's gonna cost us many, many times over that. My, the, the reason I, I bring this up is somewhere along the line, we gotta help our administrator find ways to bring this down, and I, I see this as just one small part of that, to help him in a direction.
But it's something we can decide on today, just take the look at it. For example, I'm on the Lake Ag is the Regional Library Board, and they're asking for twenty-thousand-dollar increase, and it's about eight percent or something like that. If they don't get it, you could see Yule and Linkside closed, you could see cutbacks in Holly, you can also see, could see cutbacks in Barnesville. There are ramifications if we do not do these things, but like Kevin says, we only have so much to go around, and these will be considered, as John said, I think, each one on an individual basis. See what happens. Brian?
Well, Mr. Chair, then, moving forward, and that really does help, when you guys have discussion and we glean from what you're saying, 'cause this is your budget, we know that, but it's tough sometimes for you guys to, to put in the time that's necessary, so if we can analyze some of these things and maybe make recommendations, not necessarily recommendations to that effect, but I'll, I'll pick on, on the Information Services, the fifty thousand dollars, you know, there, there's some, we have some ideas of how that could be accomplished, but yet funded over, you know, use Internal Service Funds, and, and we obligate five or ten thousand dollars for the next five or ten years to cover that, because, like he said, that update hadn't been since the nineties, so why should we paper it all in one year when we're gonna spread it out over a lengthy period of time? And I, and I, so I think we have to go through the requests and, and see, I think Julie's forty-one-five is another one, that can be done the same way and should be done the same way. That's the proper way to finance some of those, so I think we can come back with some ideas, some, some discussion points for you folks to, to look at, and, and, you know, with the, the library, what are, what is the minimum maintenance of effort that's required? And, and, you know, every department is like that, in no extension. Been, been going a long time without that position, but maybe there's some other ideas, maybe, maybe they can help with some things.
You know, I've got a question, too, on the, I mean, I think it's, so many of these things, you, you wonder if there's, if we have other funds that can help cover them. For, you mentioned the, Kevin mentioned the Capital Improvement Fund, you know, may that also, could that also be used for maintenance to help Robbie out? You know, I mean, could we, a building, you know, for maintaining a building?
I think some of that, we get into problems with maintenance, because that, it doesn't coincide with what the, what the rules and regulations were for setting the bond.
Well, that's what I wanna check on.
Capital improvement, and, capital improvement is capital improvement, it's not annual expenditures.
That's correct.
There's a, there's a distinct difference in those two things.
But, for example, replacing three-hundred-and-some-thousand dollars worth of windows in the Family Service Center should lower our heating costs.
Right.
So, and, and some of those things, you know, can help. Julie's forty-one thousand, we talked about that. I, we feel that would qualify under the Capital Improvement Plan, because it's a security item, that's a one-time purchase to upgrade, and that's in, that's capital improvement. That's exactly right.
Another thing we haven't, I don't think adequately responded to with some of the security concerns in the Family Service Center, and that certainly, those kind of concerns, if we, and, and nobody's asked for them here yet, but those things, it seems to me, would be definitely under capital improvement, so.
And, and Mr. Chair, we have, we have responded to some of those things, such as in the courthouse here and also over in Family Service Center, with some of those dollars. Mark looked at the lockdown procedures and how we broadcast that in the hallways and the different offices, and we have purchased the speaker systems with, that connect to the phone, that do the alert system. We have made some of those improvements, and some of locks and doors and, and different things, we have, we have worked at the Family Service Center.
They haven't all been installed yet, then, right? The whole system?
I think the last purchase on the speakers was probably about a month ago, they should have been installed now, the speakers should have been, so we have been making some improvements over there.
And I've gotten, heard some complaints about the lack of, of cleaning, you know, and I think our contracts clearly spell out that, that we provide the cleaning for our tenants.
Well, I, I think, Mr. Chair and, and other commissioners, too, to have a building the size that we have over there and the people coming and going, and we don't have a maintenance staff during the day to clean up, if we have, we have kids running all over the place, if you have a kid throw up, who cleans it up when you don't have a, you know, we, we bring our mechanical staff to do that, and, and so I think we, we need to do a better job of scheduling or try to augment some of that, so, I mean, we gotta look at the different options, and what you had in front of you today was what the departments had requested, and, and I think that's what you wanted to hear from them, and then we'll work at ways of, of, but I think consciously, we need to know where you're at, and you need to know what they're requesting, because it's not fair for somebody else to cut it out in between and, and then say, well, gee, I asked for it, and you didn't even get to see it, that's not right.
Another question I have is, have we made any progress with the motor vehicle building project?
We have, and what I have laying on my desk in there is the latest remodeling of the current facilities, and what Robbie and Georgia are working on right now is working with the architect for some expenses, because we felt we really didn't need to bring the two commissioners back in for a meeting until we had some, something to go forward with, something more substantial, that we could show them how it could work, and then the costs, so that they can offer. so that they can offer their input and then bring it to the board. So, yeah, we're, I'll tell you, the estimates are kind of, I don't want to say tough to get right now, but we had that designed first. That seemed quite elaborate, so we've gone back, we've worked with the space that we have, and a layout, we've shown it to the staff to make sure that it's workable, and made some adjustments on it. And so, yeah, we're very close now. And hopefully, that's a fall project, and hopefully, that'll be covered by those funds, and we'll make sure of all that. So, we're very close to bringing these gentlemen in for another committee hearing on that.
And one other question. We're not scheduled to have a meeting next week, but with the budget thing, should we?
I don't think so.
And I'm going to be, not, I'm not going to be around on the, is it the week of the 12th or whatever, when I'm going to be missing out on the, again, September, so.
We got a lot of decisions to make here. One of the things, I'd like to see the full, where we are year-to-date. I saw, you know, you can kind of go through along within this budget, there's some year-to-date numbers, but I'd like to actually see at least through June, where we are on the report we used to get.
Yep.
And I would like to get that as soon as I can, because I'd like to have some time to review that.
Sure. And, Mr. Chair, you will. I talked to Lori about that about a week and a half ago. She said, basically, not 100% of the entries are in that will be affected, but it's very, it'll be very, very close.
Well, June is ready to go, as much as we can do. You know, we don't do accrual entries, so, you know, it's, June is ready.
But I mean, Lori, if we have the, if we have the through June, it's going to show some trend, right?
Oh, yes.
I mean, that's why you look at year-to-date reports, to find out if there's something that's...
And actually, but if I ran it through July, it would actually be closer to a six-month, you know, that would actually be the six months, probably, so.
It'd be through seven months, but it'd be closer reflective of the six months expenditures, so.
And revenues?
Yep.
Because the revenues...
Revenues always run along the line.
Okay.
Anything else?
Well, what, John's question about meeting next week, Brian, do you, where do you think you'd be on, are we going to have something more, or?
Well, yeah, you'd certainly have something more. Absolutely. We'll get that, the six-month expenditures, even though it's not through the end of July, but I think we got to get it to you, because the six months is over with, and we'll, it'll be in the ballpark. We'll certainly start working on some of these to talk about, so it's...
I mean, I think it has to be up to you. If you're going to, you and Lori are going to be ready to present us with some more, I'm just saying, I'm more than willing to meet, because the time is going to be running short between now and September 15.
It is.
Do we, I mean, do we have a lot of other departments you want to bring in?
Well, Mr. Chair, I know you heard from the sheriff's office today, but the other, oh, well, you know, public health has a, about a $5 million budget. It receives about $800,000, requesting about $800,000. You know, human services or social services, they run about a $17 million budget and with about an $8 million request. And then highway is substantial. They're not asking for a great deal of increase. But those additional three should really come before you.
I agree.
Very soon. So, yeah, we'll line those up. And, you know, the others, if there's something unusual, like IT, and we're in here today because of...
But you don't feel we need to meet next week? Is it it?
I don't think a week's going to make any difference.
Well, there's just a lot of things to decide yet, so that's, we've got, this is probably as hard as any budget we've dealt with for many years.
We've got to bring this down considerably, and it's not, not because we want to, it's we have to.
Yep.
And we're not going to do this by waiting till the last day.
There is, Mr. Chair, new information that we talk about every day. So, this is changing on a regular basis. We can certainly schedule some of those departments, or those three, for next Tuesday if you'd like, and then we'd have some other suggestions, and we'll, maybe, the 25th, I think, is July, and that would be by Friday, the CPA, the county program made exact figures, and we're hoping to make up a few thousand dollars there, hopefully. Could go the other way too.
Can we try to push the co-op to get the insurance number? For us to wait till the middle of August, I think, is ridiculous, because I have real concerns too, if we have enough in there for what could come. And I'd rather know that next week as opposed to the middle of August, because that might just mean that much more we have to trim. So, I think we should have Darren and Jennifer push to get a number sooner. I think they know it. I really do. I think they know the number.
Okay. Let me see what I can do. I'll make them an offer they can't refuse.
Well, I, you know, I think, Brian, you know, because we have to decide, because it has to be noticed, right, for if we're going to meet. And I don't have a problem with meeting, and I, you know, if we're here an hour, we're here an hour. If we're here four hours, we're here four hours. It just needs to be done.
I'd feel more comfortable if we did, if we did meet, because I know, first thing, you get somebody running out of time later in August, that's...
Brian? Well, what do we plan on, I mean, if we meet next week, what do we plan on settling? We're just talking, we're just...
Probably not going to settle anything, but we've got these other departments we could hear from. Social Service, Public Health.
So, we don't do that next week, we do that the week later?
Are they already scheduled for the following week?
No, Mr. Chair, we don't have any of them scheduled yet.
I mean, I have no problem coming next week either. I don't have a problem with that.
It's just how much discussion we're going to have when we start making our cuts. We need to, and we're not going to make, you know, I hope we're not going to make a percentage cut on everything, or, you know, that kind of thing. I think we need to look at every issue and decide what's more important.
Well, I guess we need to know from each department. I mean, the last three too, then. I mean, we definitely have to mix and cuts on what they're saying, what they presented, you know. So, I guess we need to know about all of them, find out how much we have to cut, how much we can improve. But we also have to know, we have to figure in there what all our new revenues are going to be too. I mean, that's, what more are we going to get from the state and stuff like that? That has to be...
Yeah. And that's a good point. How about the, when do we actually get the number on the insurance rebate? I notice we were way down on that this year in terms of what we'd been in the past.
They pretty much told us we would be, though.
Well, they said over time, it would really go down. So, I don't know, I don't know if, I mean, it was smart to put in a lower number that we did, but I'm still wondering if maybe we didn't drop that too much too soon. I, because I agree that, because they've even warned us that ultimately, we're probably never, we're not going to see rebates at all. But we need to turn over every stone here. As soon as we can get final numbers.
And we talked about that yesterday too, Lori and I did. Is 150 way too low, or should it be closer to 300 this year?
Right.
And that's something that...
But if we knew that, it's something else that we may not have to eliminate that we would otherwise have to eliminate.
The other thing I think we need to have a discussion about, and we need to nail it down and feel very, very comfortable that the Department of Revenue is going to go along with this. And that is something that, in the past, when the legislature has instituted levy limits, they have excluded certain expenditures, and public safety was one of them. And they didn't do that this time. This was a special legislation for the levy limits. And I think about the only thing that excludes is...
Bond payments.
Bond payments, debt payments. And we need to get a good handle on that, and look how that is going to affect our bottom line. And then, are you guys willing to go outside of that levy limit? We've talked about the levy being about a 0.8 is all we can raise in the general levy, but are you willing to go outside of that levy limit for a 2% or 3, or 2 to 3%? It could be as far as paying the levy, which would really offset quite a few dollars.
What do you mean by that? I don't...
Well, if we set the bond payment outside of the levy, then it's not, the levy limit does not apply. So, you know, $400,000 or $500,000 of...
Currently, is that in?
We've always had that outside the levy.
It's always been outside the levy.
So, it's not, it's not included now, is it?
Well, it's shown on the sheet, but it's not.
Right. But we've, as long as we've ever been doing levies, that's always been outside the levy limit.
That's correct. That's outside of the levy. But it's, right now, it's included in our levy.
Oh, yeah.
And it's included in your...
Well, because you want to know what your bottom line increase is going to be.
Right.
Which is still there.
But, yeah, we could separate that out.
Some of that could, some of it may go outside. And the discussion I had with Lori yesterday, 145, they also would exempt expenditures that you had to pay for a natural disaster or preparation for that. Now, I don't say we differ on that. We're unclear on that whether the 145,000 that we are budgeting for preparation for a disaster, and that's what the 145 is. And Lori thinks that's a walk in the fine line.
Well, I mean, if we can put it outside, that'd be great, but that's pretty iffy, I think.
Yeah. But that thinks we need to check on, to make sure.
That's got to come from Lori.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, what's the consensus about...
Well, I would, I think, I'd feel more confident we did meet next week. I'm just afraid we're going to run out of time.
Governor?
I agree.
Frank?
I'll go with it.
Consensus?
Okay. Very good.
You 30?
Sure.
That'd be great.
Anything else, Governor? Lori? For adjourn.